I put a call to order, the board meeting of District 208 Board of Education. I would ask the Board of Education to stay in a moment of silence following the Pledge of Allegiance for our student.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a moment in the memory of Nate Valero, our student who we tragically lost last week. Thank you, everyone. Ms. Nardi, roll call.
Mr. Durkens?
Here.
Yes, go here. Your slide.
Here. Here.
Here. We have discussion, we do have some FOIA items this evening.
Yes, can I watch that completely?
Sure. Actually, while you're pulling those up, I'm going to go, if the board will indulge me and go slightly out of order. At our last meeting, we talked about moving the swearing in and the goodbye for our current members to the 29th of April. We'd like to keep that on the 29th, but start at 6:00 PM. Does that work for everyone?
Not at least, huh?
Yes, no objections? Okay. So Ms. Nardi will ask you to update the time. I think the date's been updated on the calendar, but the time needs to be updated, so thank you.
And it's also on the, I know we have a notice on the webpage about the date being moved. We still have the old calendar when you click Board Meeting Dates, so we need to shorten that, actually stop it on April 29th at 6:00, and then eliminate the other rows because we won't know what the board's new calendar will be. So we shouldn't have May, June, July showing on the spreadsheet.
Thank you, Dr. Skinkis.
Yes, we have several FOIAs. One FOIA was in regards to an old intergovernmental agreement for Ellard Park between us and the Village of Brookfield. And then the other 11, 10 for sure, 10 from ACB are all, we found out it was, it's not an automated, it's not an AI software. All the schools were getting these in regards to various vendors and firms and individuals from fiscal years going back all the way to, I believe, 2007, 2006. So our majorities came from our treasurer and our public documents, so you can see the responses attached.
Thank you very much to Ms. Nardi and the team who put those together. I know FOIAs are not for the faint of heart, so thank you. Principals report. Dr. Freitas.
Greetings, Honorable Board Members and Mr. Superintendent. So for the month of April, the teaching and learning, tomorrow is our ACT, all school testing for grades nine through 11. We begin testing promptly at 8:00 AM, should run until about 12:30 or a few minutes afterward. We'll be doing this throughout the building. The seniors do not have to be present as they have a college career day. You know, they should be visiting their colleges and exploring careers that day. It is not a free day. On the 18th, we have a non-attendance day. On the 23rd of April, we have an optional SAT, no SAT testing day for junior, the window for registration has been lowered, that'll happen here during the school day in specific classrooms. In the month of May, in a few weeks, we will begin AP testing, the first two weeks of May. And in June, in the summer, we begin our 2025 Summer Academics Offering. So we will have credit recovery, US Government and Health, registration for advanced and enrichment classes begin, programs begin April 1st, and registration for credit recovery begins on May 1st. On the School Culture and Operations, tomorrow, excuse me, Thursday, we have a Trades and Career Info Night, starting at 6:30 PM in the auditorium. The event, you know, is, the purpose of the event is for parents to learn about the trades so they can support their students as they begin exploring, you know, options of what to do, you know, during and after high school as well. Should be very well attended. We have guest speakers. We've partnered with Alta Organization as well, so it should be a great day. On April 24th, we have Senior Fine Arts and Applied Arts Recognition Ceremony, starting at 7:30 PM in Room 201. On April 25th, we have our Institute Day, that is also prom. On April 30th, we have Coffee with the Principal at 9:00 AM in the staff cafeteria. On the April 30th, we have our Annual Senior Exit Survey administered in all English classes, and that actually runs through the May 1st as well. May 2nd, graduation tickets request must be submitted. On the 7th, we have capping on distribution and graduation tickets pickup during all lunch periods in the atrium. On the 14th of May, we have the College Commitment Ceremony for RB committed athletes in the morning, 7:00 AM in the main gym. On the 14th, we have the Local Scholarship Breakfast by invitation only, 7:30 AM in the auditorium. The next day, on May 15th, we have Senior Awards, again by invitation only, starting at 6:00 PM in the main gym. On the 15th as well, we have the Yearbook Distribution in the Fieldhouse, starting at 3:05. On the 23rd, we have mandatory graduation rehearsal at 11:00 AM. That same day, after rehearsal, we have the Senior Picnic, Senior Luncheon, and in the evening, we will be having our commencement ceremony, 6:30 PM in the main gym. And in the month of June, for Activities in Athletics, we begin our Summer Camps. We're going to have things such as Band Camp, Collegar Camps, Camp College, RBTV, and Bridge to RB, and a plethora of athletic camps. Registration for Athletic and Enrichment Activities begin April 1st. And that concludes my principal report. Now I will hand it off to our two student advisors to the Board of Education.
Thank you so much, Ari. Thank you, Honorable Board, for your time. I appreciate it. To begin, a little bit early, but to start off with teaching and learning, we have final exams that will be going on May 19th to the 22nd. So these are the final grades of the year. Students are encouraged to reach out to their teachers before their grades are finalized for second semester. For our School Culture and Operations in April, on the 15th is what I wish I had known. So this is going to be an informational meeting for students and for parents. It's going to be held at RB in the Little Theater. This will be from 6:00 to 7:00 PM on April 15th. On April 23rd, Student Association is hosting Blood Drive signup. So this is going to be occurring in between 10:45 AM to 1:15 PM during all lunches, and this will be in the cafeteria. This is basically our preemptive signups to the Blood Drive, which is going to happen on the 2nd, and all students who are eligible are encouraged to sign up. On the 25th of April is going to be our prom. So that's going to be from 6:30 PM to 10:00 PM, and this is at the Oakbrook Hills Hilton. The theme this year is going to be La La Land, and I know the tickets are around $90, and they go up over time before the prom. So we're super excited for this, and we definitely encourage everyone to go out and experience, you know, something about their high school career they won't forget. For May 2nd, the Student Association Blood Drive, so like I mentioned before, this is going to be from 7:30 AM to 3:00 PM, so basically throughout the entirety of the school day. This will be in the East Gym, and like I mentioned before, you must have signed up beforehand, and like I said, students who are eligible are encouraged to sign up to donate if possible, because one pint of blood can save up to three lives. So we do encourage that students come out and support Student Association and their Blood Drive, which is going to be the final one for the year. For April, and Activities in Athletics, so for the 5th was the IHSDA State Showcase, that was this past Saturday. This occurred from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM, and this was in the auditorium. So this was included multiple schools from across the area this past Saturday, and had performances from different dance groups at these different high schools, and include our very own performances from Kayla Novak and Amelia Roder as well. All right. And then on the 8th, which is tonight, was the Boys Lacrosse Senior Night, so versus Kenwood. So this is going to, started at 5:30 in the Kennelly Athletic Complex, and student staff were encouraged to come out and support our senior boys lacrosse team as they wrap up their final season.
All right. Thank you so much, Olivia. So I will continue sharing a little bit about Activities in Athletics for the month of April. So on the 16th, which is next week, there will be a jazz concert from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, and that will occur at the Little Theater. They will have combined performances with the Jazz Ensemble and Band, and it will also be collaboration with The Magical Singers. On the 22nd, there will be the District 96 Orchestra Concert featuring RBHS that will occur from 6:00 to 9:00 PM in the auditorium. So it will be a concert, a combined concert with RBHS students as well as those students from District 96, those students who attended Ames and Hauser. On the 24th, there will be the Spring Band Orchestra Concert from 7:00 to 8:45 PM in the auditorium. It's also known as the Riverside Celebration Concert. So please come out to support our wonderful band orchestra musicians. On the 30th of April, there will be the Multicultural Night. It will occur from 6:30 to 8:00 PM, and it will occur in multiple spaces. This is the second year that RB is hosting their Multicultural Night, and it will include cultural performances as well as global cuisine for attendees. Admission is free and is open to the public. It is brought to you by multicultural clubs such as the Organization of Latin American Students, Minority of Powerment Club, and Asian Student Association. In the month of May, from the 1st to the 3rd, there will be the Spring Dance Concert that will occur from 7:00 to 9:00 PM in the auditorium. So it will be a chance to experience performances from our wonderful and talented dance department here at RB. On the 6th, there will be the Spring Choir Concert from 7:00 to 8:00 PM in the auditorium, and you will have the chance to see performances from our incredible choir from 9:00 to the 16th, which is a week-long performance brought to you by Shenanigans. The Shenanigans will have their spring show from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and that will be at the Little Theater. And then finally, on the 13th, Rock Band will have their spring showcase from 7:00 to 8:00 PM in the auditorium, and so you'll have a chance to hear what our Rock Band has been working on recently. That concludes our report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. And this is your final meeting, correct?
Oh, the, uh, in May 13th is their final.
I keep saying this, and I'm always wrong.
May 13th.
It's been like four meetings in a row that I've messed up, so I apologize.
Please encourage any juniors that you may know that are considering applying to apply, because that window is closing very quickly, and I think we could use a couple more applications.
Thank you. Yes, please encourage your colleagues.
On Board of Education, tonight, the next thing we have is the Summer Report on the Board of Education Goals. Several of those were assigned to Building Administration, being a single district, school district, so, you know, tonight when we discuss the academic goal related to the transition to SAT and ACT, Ms. Augustine and Ms. Linquist will handle that. When we discuss communication, Ms. Kylie Fletcher will discuss the board's communication goal and the action steps that were taken this year. When we discuss our Equity Action Plan, Dr. Freitas will address that goal. And when we talk about our Finance Goal for FI 25, Dr. Smetana will address that goal. So at this time, Ms. Linquist and Ms. Augustine. I believe you're first on the chart.
Yeah.
So you get to set the tempo.
Yeah.
I timed it in half.
So as Dr. Skinkis mentioned, this year, we represent the SEL and academic portion of the districts' SMART goal. And our goal for this year was primarily to manage the transition from SAT to ACT, as well as utilizing our MTSS structure to better address our achievement gap moving forward. Our action steps for this school year are listed on the document as well as the status updates from this year, so I won't read those to you. However, some key updates to our progress toward our goals are as follows. We created and convened an MTSS leadership team to evaluate our MTSS protocol as a whole while simultaneously analyzing intervention data to identify gaps in our intervention system as a whole.
MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. Remember, we had a report on it about a year or two ago. That's where there's Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, and then eventually, if a student is not responding to interventions at Level 1, Level 2, or Level 3, eventually there's a recommendation for specialized. Okay?
We also engaged teachers in our core academic areas in the review of ACT standards at each grade level in order to identify and address instructional and curricular gaps there, as well as continuing to evaluate and analyze student performance data, like pre-ACT, STAR, and classroom assessment data through our PLCs, in order to identify students in need of intervention either at the Tier 2 level, which is the classroom level, or the Tier 3 level, which is a more intensive intervention level. In addition to the document that shows the action steps for, toward our part of the SMART goal, I also included an MTSS update from the Academic Lens to show the board how we've continued to work around last year's SMART goals specific to MTSS and data analysis and response. So in this brief report, I've included summaries of the data from the three major data points that are used to drive our discussions around intervention and the achievement gap. That would be the STAR assessment, the pre-ACT, and the semester grade data, as well as an overview of new interventions for next school year in comparison to interventions in place this school year to show the evolution of our interventions as a result of that multi-tiered systems of support, that MTSS review and analysis that we did with our leadership team. And also a brief summary of what research suggests are the key ways to reduce the achievement gap, as well as our progress towards success in each of those areas. If I had to say the key points that I would hope you would take away from this part of the report, it would be those for research-based ways to address the achievement gap, teaching based on standards, engaging students in challenging curriculum, providing extra help for students, and increasing teacher efficacy. As we look toward the future, I anticipate any extension of these goals or any future goals or action steps around academics to include these components of that successful plan to reduce the achievement gap, specifically as it pertains to extra time for students, as that is probably the most significant way through focused intervention that we can best work to mitigate that gap. And then Beth has another section.
So while we didn't have specific action steps related to social emotional support for students this year, it was still part of the overall SMART goal, so I wanted to share an overview of what was provided this year. We continued the SOS program for freshmen at the start of the school year. Panorama, which was part of the action step several years ago, provided two surveys each semester during an extended second period, and based on these results, we invited students to participate in an SEL group experience. And the targeted areas of need this year were social emotional, emotional regulation and social awareness. We provided additional groups based on student need. We referred 62 students to Tapestry, the maximum, the program through West 40 that offers additional support to students who are struggling with academics, attendance, or other behaviors. And then we have also continued other Tier 1 supports, like pushing into English and health classes with SEL lessons and providing guest speakers on important topics to students. So I think this summary is just a quick overview of the tiered SEL supports that the Student Services Team provided this year and will continue to provide in the years to come. And on the next page, I provided you a summary of the data from the National Clearing House for the class of 2024. This information connects with academic rigor for the board's SMART goal. The data was not available when I shared graduation rate data in October, but moving forward, I should have that data for each graduating class when we report out to the board in the fall. And I think the key takeaway here is that the number of students attending a two-year, four-year schools or pursuing other post-secondary opportunities are consistent with the data that was provided last year.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Kylie. There were no questions submitted. Does anybody have a question tonight? Thank you so much.
No question, but thank you for the clearing house, Nita.
You're welcome.
I think that it does give a really good picture of where our students are going. I appreciate also the breakdown of where they attended, and specifically, you gave us number one, number two, and number three, so I think that that just gives us a good.
And it's highlighted on the website as well. That was included. All this information where students are attending has been linked to the Student Services website.
Well, I'm guessing the top four here, those are, those are in alpha order. They're not in attendance order.
I list, they're not, but I just listed off to the side, the number one, number two. They're in alpha order, but I listed the top schools off. It's over to the.
Champagne University, UIC.
Oh, there we go. That's okay.
Thank you.
Just when I saw Columbia first, I mean, that didn't quite.
Yeah.
I was like, that's interesting, but okay. So yeah, so my, my quick math, that's 388 graduates, 86% to a two- or four-year college. I just did the math, but I'm probably wrong. So a little under 100 to a two-year, and the remaining of the 86% to a four-year.
95 to a two-year and 293 to the four-year.
And your math was good. Thank you.
Yeah, I was curious.
Yeah.
And this is good, this is good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fletcher? This will be addressing the board's goal of collaborating with stakeholders on expanding two-way engagement.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Skinkis. So my first action step for my SMART goal this year was to host Parent University Series. So during this school year, we will have hosted five Parent University Series. These include Family Welcome Back Night, Early College Credit Curriculum, and Core Selection Night, The Impact of Social Media on Our Youth, Communicating with Teens/Mental Health Resources. And our final Parent University will actually be this Thursday, April 10th, which will be a Trades Information Night. This will feature Erica Kuba from the Displanes Valley Regional Cooperative DVR, and several individuals in the trades will also be speaking. We have also partnered with the Glenbard Parent Series, which are free presentations available to all families from authors, clinicians, and parenting experts throughout the state of Illinois. My second action step is to administer surveys. So throughout the school year, I have administered four surveys to parents on numerous worldwide events. These include residency, open house, future Bulldog Night, and incoming freshman registration. So before these events are hosted for the 25, 26 school year, the administration and I will review these survey results and analyze response trends to see if there are ways to improve these events for our students and families in the years to come. My next action step is to increase the volume of content related to classroom and educational initiatives. So I've continued to highlight classroom and educational initiatives and have streamlined this process by creating a Google form for teachers to fill out, for them to request a classroom visit, or for them to send photos of a lesson or project. So this form has not only helped me keep track of the classrooms that I'm highlighting, but it's also allowed me to visit over 20 classrooms this year. Additionally, I have collaborated with Triton College and RBTV to create videos highlighting dual enrollment and dual credit offerings at RB. My final action step is to collaborate with the Athletic Department to improve communication. So we have increased the number of social media posts relating to athletics, which includes a weekly schedule that sent out any changes to games or schedules with this amazing weather, and continue to grow our Athletics Twitter slash X account. And we have started our Athlete of the Month highlights, where coaches nominate athletes that have gone above and beyond in their sport, and this gives extra recognition to these athletes. Additionally, I have assisted the Athletic Department with bringing the Athletic Academy to RB, which is a college recruitment platform that streamlines communication between student athletes and college recruiters. In conclusion, with two-year almost complete, I feel confident in the two-way communication process that I have implemented. These include social media, weekly and quarterly newsletters, email, text, and website notifications, and everything I mentioned today. So for the 25, 26 school year, I do plan on growing this foundation that I've built by producing more marketing and branding video content for the district in collaboration with RBTV, and continuing to host community events and opportunities for community feedback. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kylie. Questions?
I just want to say thank you, and the trades thing, I have seen it, people talked about it that aren't even in this room, so I'm glad that word is getting out to not only help our college bound, but also those that college isn't a good fit, so I appreciate your help with that. And I know Bill did a lot of work on that early on, so.
Thank you.
I would just ask as a, oh, no, go ahead. Mine's more of a follow-up.
I would just say, I know this goal was a little bit wide when we came up with it three and a half years ago, and I can say, I think I'm getting cooler. And I know I'm getting cooler, I'm in with the social media, but I do feel like I'm seeing more of what's happening, so I do appreciate the work that's going into that and seeing what's going on here at the high school.
I would just ask as a Friday update, update item, could you send us some information on the Athletic Academy, if that's different than NCSA?
It is. So the Athletic Academy, we, just for the board, a quick 90-second view, I had stumbled upon a resource that were being used in some other schools, and when I looked into the cost, it was a minimal cost, and I talked about it with Dr. Freitas, Mr. Torres, and Ms. Fletcher. We did a webinar with the company, and Dr. Freitas and Mr. Torres were very excited. Basically, it's a free platform for any of our athletes to create their own profile, where they could put their Huddle videos, or game videos, or things on, and a couple of their physical attributes or accomplishments, and then they can use that to automatically go post it to Twitter, or Instagram, or those things, and send it out to college coaches. It also has resources of college coaches available in multiple sports at multiple levels. It's a lot, what it's done is it's helped take some of the burden off of our high school coaches, or close the gap of what's not being done. As part of our equity plan, we thought that was also another opportunity to get kids' college exposure. So I think it was a minimal fee, and we were able to find that money in the budget. So I will have, I will give you an example of a link that Kylie and Mr. Torres are working on.
Yeah, I think it'd just be interesting, having gone through this in my own family, it's a lot of family resources, and I mean, it's not, the coaches don't have the time or bandwidth to help, and it's really an independent exercise, kind of getting recruited for, for college, so that's a, any tools would be helpful.
Dr. Freitas, you want to add anything?
Yeah, no, I think, you know, I'm excited for this opportunity, but it levels the playing field for, you know, public school students who may not have the knowledge or, or the, you know, economic resources to kind of, right, promote themselves for the, for the next, that next level opportunity. You know, I think it brings students and parents together on one platform so they could begin that recruiting journey. That could only, that could only, I see this platform as only helping more of our students to play in Division 1, 2, and 3. And I believe it'll be a great resources, it'll be a great resource for our student athletes, and I'm excited to, you know, move this forward, but it's going to be, it's going to be great for our student athletes and for our families.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Fletcher? Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Kylie.
Dr. Freitas?
Good evening again, board members and Dr. Skinkis. In the fall, I presented the Equity Action Plan, and all of the objectives co-created by STRAM members reflective of the Board of Education goal to continue ongoing training and engagement in equity. This evening, I will present the accomplishments of each STRAM team. The System strand that focuses on advancing equity without policies, procedures, and processes reviewed equity definition of surveyed stakeholders. They recommended equity definition for adoption to the Board of Education in December of 2024, and I'm proud to say that we have defined an equity definition. Thank you, board members. And the definition is equity is having high expectation for every student learner and providing the support and resources so each learner can develop to their full academic and social potential. I'm proud of this board's work, and of course, our superintendent. Our second, our second strand team dealing with teaching and learning expanded and solidified the multi-tiered team, the MTSS team. They supported the ACT transition through pre-test teacher training so as to, so as to address the achievement gap. And they designed additional, and they designated additional interventions at the sophomore and junior levels for the 25, 20 school year, because we saw that gap, and we spoke here in previous months, we had a gap of intervention at the sophomore junior year, and that really came out of the teaching and learning strand. You know, I have a big shout out to Ms. Kylie Linquist and her strand team there. For strand team number three, Student Voice Climate and Culture, this is year two of our Student Equity Leadership Team led by Mr. Mannan and his team. There's approximately 15 students. Those students, along with other organizations, organized the Second Annual Multicultural Night coming up in April. The team also organized a Spirit Gear Giveaway at future Bulldog Night this past year, and currently, the Student Equity Leadership Team is evaluating survey responses from the Climate and Culture Survey. Strand fourteen, Professional Learning, led by Ms. Beth Augustine, one of our administrators, accomplished a lot. This year, her and her team and several other teachers attended the December 2024 Multilingual ESSA Conference. They will take what they learned from that conference and present it at our April 25th Institute Day. And last but not least, Strand five, with Ms. Kylie Fletcher and myself and other members, we continue to review communication efforts, and we added official residency documents in Spanish to help bridge that language gap, and we have the Weeklight Translation Service on our website. If you go to our website, the top right corner, you can translate it correctly in 10 of the most common languages. We also worked with our data specialist, Sherri Kosick, to get us those top 10 languages, so shout out to Sherri there. We continue to facilitate several parent universities, as mentioned by Kylie, and we, you know, in conclusion, you know, our goal is to continue moving our Equity Action Plan forward, right? Continue the transition from ACT to ACT, continue supporting staff, continue looking for interventions, continue engaging our students, continue with our parent universities, and last but not least, always continue to improve our communication efforts and diversify. And last but not least, always continue to improve our communication efforts and diversify. And that concludes my goal, our goal, board members.
Any questions or comments from anyone on that? Thank you, Dr. Freitas.
Dr. Smetana, the Finance Goal.
Good evening. The Finance Goal for this school year was to finance two major capital projects while continuing to ensure resources were committed to programs directly affecting student outcomes and monetary expenditures to ensure June 30th actuals are at or below the board-approved budget level. The first action step was to oversee the issuance of non-taxable working cash bonds for capital projects. The bonds were issued on September 17th, and proceeds were received on October 8th. The next action step was to track expenditures for solar panels and the culinary lab projects to keep the projects within the approved budget. The culinary project, including change orders, did come under budget, as evidenced in the monthly financial reports. If you reference Capital Project Fund 60, I'm waiting to close out the culinary lab project. I know we've had students in there since November, but we did commission the project for specifically the air handling unit. And the air handling unit, when it's installed in November, can't be commissioned properly because you need so many days over 60 degrees in order to make sure that it's running properly. So that will get closed out this month, and then I'll be able to post all the financial tracking documents to the website and present them to the board at that time. But it is tracking... We only have one final payment left, and so I can tell you, as you've seen from the monthly reports in Fund 60, that it is coming in under budget.
You're hopeful for those 60-degree days, then?
Correct. We don't have any expenses for solar panels at this time, and I'll touch on that later in the meeting. The next action step was to compile a list of additional resources in this year's budget that were committed to programs directly affecting student outcomes. So the list to date is follows. We budgeted for additional standardized testing with a transition to ACT to allow students to take an optional SAT to continue on in that series, as well as to provide practice tests prior to taking the ACT. We added boys and girls bowling this year, as well as nine other stipends due to participation. We that number will likely grow to 10 tonight. Translation of documents on the website, as you heard from Ms. Fletcher, that was not initially planned in the budget, but we were able to find some money for it for this year. And then increased dual credit opportunities for students, which includes transportation as well as tuition for dual credit and dual enrollment. And then the School Links program to provide improved class registration process for students and parents and move that process online for them. And then the last action step, the school year was to review and update the curriculum guide prior to the course selection process in November, and then work with the building leadership team to align program staffing and interventions for budgeting purposes and for future course selections. So Mrs. Linquist has done the heavy lifting in regards to this goal, but the curriculum guide was reviewed, updated, and posted online before course selection process this year, and they're in the process of doing a more in-depth analysis. And then they will present that analysis to the superintendent's Curriculum Advisory Council, hopefully towards the end of May. And then changes will be made before next year's registration process begins in November. So it'll be made before the curriculum guide goes live in October.
Thank you. Once again, no questions were submitted, board members. Do you have anything for tonight? And then our last goal was obviously the footprint and the physical in regards to our facilities, and that goal has been placed on hold till further notice.
So if I could, Dr. Skinkes, I have later on in the agenda a discussion for this board to have about a potential IASB retreat, but I think this tracks with that in that this board or the newly constituted board will need you looking at the 25-26 goals. As summer wraps up, the way we've handled this in the past, I believe, is we've had the administration kind of come up with their suggestions. We heard a number of them tonight. Some of them are embedded in these documents. Asked them to come forward with suggestions, and then in the first quarter of the school year is when we've, as a board, moved to approve those goals. Am I correct on that chronology?
Yes.
Okay.
So now, if we approve them in the first quarter, somewhere between July 1 and August, September, historically, that first year, if we change or update the goals, then there's a possibility that we may need more than just one school year to address them.
Sure.
Like, I think you saw a pretty good report tonight. Like, everybody hit their action steps. They came in with a plan, and we achieved those.
Well, I guess I should be more clear. I think we would ask the administration to come up with action steps for the goals, but the board itself may wish to amend or update the goals, the underlying goals. That's what I would expect to happen in discussion over the summer. If there's suggestions for that, we can talk about it at a future meeting, but I want to put it out there.
I would think that would be a discussion you would start to engage in on the 29th, once the new board is seated, and then you would proceed from that. But yes, you are correct. It should be finalized hopefully in the first quarter.
Okay. Is everyone aligned with that? It makes sense?
Quarter of the fiscal year, not the school year.
I was fiscal.
Right.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that everybody else has cleared them.
Thank you. Any more comments on this, on the goals as presented this evening for updates from our student board members? Anyone? No? Thanks, everyone. Visitor comments this evening? Seeing none. Additional discussion items from anyone on the board? I had the luxury of adding mine to the agenda, but I thought I'd ask here. Moving on to consent... Excuse me, consent agenda. We have approval of minutes. I think, Ms. Gasko, you can move ahead with those if you would.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Co. County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on March 11, 2025, open and closed sessions, as presented in the April 8, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. A second for Ms. Locke. And we do need all in favor.
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries. Under Old Business, we have an update on the solar panels. Or do you want to give us a life safety update?
Life safety first.
We do have a life safety update as well. Attached is a finalized life safety survey for the district. The study is required by the state of Illinois and may be completed every 10 years. You saw it at the last board meeting. This is just a slightly different format. This is the format we have to submit to ISB. Our architect will submit the report to ISB once the Board of Education has approved the attached life safety 10-year study. The approximate cost is $303,440. That does not include the roofs that will need to be replaced in likely 2029. We'll do an amendment for that. And of the $303,440, a lot of that work is work that Airmark, Birm, and his staff can complete in-house, so it won't actually cost the district that much. That's the approximate cost if we had to hire somebody external to do all of that work.
So there were no questions on this last meeting or this evening? I don't think anyone submitted any questions on this.
Correct.
So is everyone comfortable moving ahead? Okay.
Yeah, it looked pretty minimal for those.
We should take a vote on it.
Yes, please.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Co. County, Illinois, approves the 10-year life safety survey as presented in the April 8, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
A second for Ms. Locke, and this is a roll call, please.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Mr. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Lapp?
Yes.
Mr. Nelbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Menhor?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
And Ms. Davis.
Yes. And then we have the solar panels that I took out of order, but go ahead.
That's okay. You were just excited, as am I. We have an actual significant update to share. So as we previously discussed back in October, at the October 22nd board meeting, we decided to reissue the RFP, or Request for Proposal, for the solar panel project. So the new RFP was issued on February 18, 2025. On February 26, there was a mandatory meeting for any vendor wishing to submit the RFP. The RFPs were then due on March 12 at 2:30. The district received four proposals from the following companies: Amps Power Solution, National Solar Energy, Utopian Power, and Verde Solutions. As outlined in the RFP, there were two evaluation phases. The first phase, each company submitted a proposal, and that was evaluated using the following criteria: the experience of their personnel, successful experience with similar project types and sizes, the financial capability of the company, the timeliness of past performance, and successful reference checks of the firm, and also their qualifications. So based off of all of that information, two companies advanced to the second phase, and that was Utopian Power and Verde Solutions. And then these companies were evaluated on four additional criteria, which was also outlined in the RFP: technical qualifications and capability, project approach, system, and cost components, project financials, and experience with schools and municipal government projects, including providing results achieved. So based off of this criteria, Verde Solutions was selected as the finalist. And I provided a summary of the two proposals below, so you could see kind of how they compared to one another. Verde Solutions was by far the most comprehensive RFP that we received. It was also the cheapest RFP that we had received as well. Based off of this criteria, since we selected Verde Solutions as the finalist, the next requirement in the design-build process is to have the district's architect, which is DLA, review the proposal to determine if the technical submissions are in accordance with industry standards, which they did, and they were. And then we are currently in collaboration with Verde Solutions and the district's attorney in negotiating a contract. I provided the draft version of the contract attached. As an update, there are only three outstanding items that we're going back and forth on, so I do feel confident that we should have a final contract to present to the board for April 29. Assuming that that timeline happens, I provided an updated timeline for the board. So we begin the engineering process as soon as the board approved the contract, and then pay 20% of the contract price, and then that would conclude. And then we would move into the permitting process, so then we'd have to receive the permits before we would order the equipment. And when they order the equipment, we would pay an additional 40%. And then they could install earlier, but we don't want to disrupt school, and we also don't want to go through any extra costs or headaches by installing it in colder months where there could possibly be snow. So we have elected to begin the mobilization to install in May of next year, 2026, and then finish the project by August 7, before the school year begins. So we will, if we stick to roughly this timeline, we will have a small cost incurred for the solar project this year, not quite the, you know, the whole amount that we initially budgeted for. And then a majority of the project will hit the following fiscal year, and then a little bit of it, you'll see, wraps up in July and August of the fiscal year 27. Also, I should have mentioned in the chart, you'll see that it's five years to recover the cost. So while the cost upfront is a little over a million dollars, within five years, the district recovers all of the cost for that project based off of incentives, as well as energy savings. And then in the years to come, it just benefits from the energy savings.
So I didn't submit this earlier, and I apologize. Have we had any preliminary discussions with the village about the permitting process? We do have quite a bit of time before work starts.
We have not. That's Verde's responsibility, so at this time, we have not done that.
Where do you feel you'll... From this meeting to the next, you'll have, instead of two, you'll have almost three weeks. It'd be good if we can wrap up this contract and approve it the 29th. And the way the meeting will flow on the 29th is the board will convene at 6:00 AM... or 6:00 PM.
Well, we didn't talk about that.
The board will convene at 6:00 PM, and at that point, we close, we try to wrap up any business from this board. So this would be like one of those examples of, okay, you've been working on this project for over a year. It'd be good if we can have this on a consent agenda, or as a motion to approve, so that, you know, once we recognize the outgoing board members and swearing the new board members, we kind of can start with new business. The new board members and the new board would address the actual install and the timeline and the progress of the report of the project.
Since there's only minor issues with the legal language at this point, I'd be comfortable having it on consent for that meeting, but I would defer to the group.
As long as there's enough time. I mean, I think that extra week, that will probably help.
So we need to just make sure our attorneys, especially Brian.
I'm not concerned about getting this done before the next board meeting. The next item is copiers, and you might take a look, and that's a little more lengthy. So that one might not be finalized in the next three weeks, but I feel confident that this contract would be finalized.
So is the group comfortable moving this to consent for the 29th?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's separate discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Smetana, and let's go to copiers.
So as you know, we've been talking about for the last two meetings, our current four-year lease agreement with our copiers is expiring June.
What page? I'm sorry.
222. 222. And as previously discussed, we've decided to move forward with a five-year lease agreement with Canon. We are in the process of negotiating a contract. Provided the contract for the board to review in terms of where we currently are in negotiating a contract. It's a very lengthy contract with several different riders and attachments. So we still have several items that we're going back and forth on. I'm meeting with the district's legal counsel again tomorrow to see, to review the existing items before he can go back to Canon. The goal is certainly to bring it, a finalized contract by April 29. I am not as confident that we'll get that done. They seem a little... It's taking a little longer, and then there's a little bit more back and forth with Canon because they like to have a blanket contract that they can use for future services as well, and that's kind of not what we're trying to get accomplished. So again, my goal is to have it for April 29. If it...
So I would suggest we don't put this on consent. We keep it as a standalone item. If it's ready to go, great. If not, the new board will have to get up to speed on it, but it's fairly perfunctory.
$60,000.
And there's not a big...
2.1 million is a...
Is it okay with everyone?
And I know last... A month ago, we had talked about the difference between four and five years. Right here, it's still listed as four, just giving you a heads up, but I don't know.
Where are you looking?
On page 222. Cost 67, 222... or 224. That's for the four years.
Oh, sorry. I changed the narrative, not the dollar, not that part. Yes.
We had talked about both, and I think, you know...
They came back and...
We were willing to roll the dice from hearing from a couple other schools, so...
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
And I'm looking at this. The current agreement doesn't expire till June, so there's some... There is some latitude there.
Yeah, we do need to get the contract done in May so that we can have the copiers.
You'd like to have copiers for the start of school in the fall?
Start of school in the fall.
We do have some time still.
Christmas Eve.
Yeah, there you go.
Right.
Where's the copier? Okay. Anything else on copiers? We're good to go? New business, payment of bills? Didn't see any questions on this?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Co. County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the April 8, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
A second for Ms. Locke, and we need a roll call, please.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Lapp?
Yes.
Mr. Nelbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Menhor?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Davis.
Yes. This next item, are you looking for approval this evening?
Either at this meeting or the next meeting would be great. So the consolidated district plan, which began in the 1920 school year, is a prerequisite to completing any federal grant applications.
The 2020 school year. You said 1920 school year?
19...
2020.
1920. Correct.
So that's the year in which this began, but it's not consolidating districts, it's consolidating grant applications, and the district has to complete this before they can apply for any of the grants that we receive. So that's Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, and IDEA. The board has to approve this every year in order for myself to submit it to ISB. There are no significant changes since the board approved it last May. There are minor changes here and there, but we do need approval for the board at some point this month, so I can then go ahead and submit the title grants.
Be okay for the board to use the next three weeks to review if you have any questions and put this on the consent as well?
I think that's a good suggestion. If anyone's good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there were no questions at this point. It is, does look very similar to last year. Just to clarify, these are for the federal grants as the consolidated plan, and then ISB is the official recipient of those grants?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so we are never a named recipient of a federal grant?
All of the federal money flows through the state.
That's, okay. Thank you.
So we'll have two consent agenda items, Mary Ann Solar and Consolidated District Plan.
Hopefully.
Unless there's questions submitted or concerns.
Okay, moving on. Visitor statements? Second chance? Anyone? Discussion items requested? There were none requested from the board. Consideration of items for future meetings. My suggestion was that we, as a board, request the administration contact IASB to perform another, they don't call it a retreat, Laura, you can help me with the language, I think it's an in-service.
It's an in-service. It's kind of like a board evaluation.
Yes, self-evaluation.
It's a self-evaluation of the board.
Yeah, I think we did that about five years ago, is my recollection. We have, obviously, we're losing two very good members who cared quite a bit about kids in this community, and we're getting two new members that I hope will have the, I assume will have the equal level of care and commitment, but want to make sure that we all are moving in the same directions. I think it might be a helpful exercise for everyone to participate in that. I know it takes a little while to schedule with IASB. We have to use the area representative, so if it's okay with the board, I'd like to ask Dr. Skinkis and team to start looking at dates as maybe that happens until fall, is what I'm guessing. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
Yep. Ryan and Carolyn, you can have an opinion as well, but... Thanks, everybody.
I'll probably work with Ms. Nardi as the board secretary to coordinate this. I'll also try to see if we can get Lori Grant, who did the last one. I thought she did a nice job keeping that fluid, so it only took a few hours on a Saturday.
No, she did a great job, and she's really active on their website.
She's moved up the food chain a little bit, but...
Yeah, I think her having some understanding of the district, and she was here as we wrote our initial policy statement and the goals, that might be a helpful connection. I thought she was good. And having nothing else here, matters for closed session, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
There are specific items under the HR packet of the Assistant Superintendent, Principal's Contract, Non-Certified, Certified, and Annual Goal Summing.
I normally don't read this up, I guess. Thank you. They are on the posted agenda.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Co. County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the April 8, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Menhorst, and we have a roll call for closed.
Ms. Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Menhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, it's 7:54.